Hey, everybody. I had a, um, some XP sessions. I kind of had a skyline. Great trip, please.
How you doing?
Hey, what you got around?
I just realized there's something going on behind me. You're talking to me while I'm looking at.
To a special meeting of the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen on February 10th, 2020. Tonight's agenda will be devoted to wastewater. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item is introduction and overview Water Resource Advisory Committee.
Hi, I'm Chris Seers. I'm the chair of the committee. With us tonight is Sparo Mitrikostas, Tom Durkin, John Deliso, Tom Roach, Dave Young from CDM Smith, Kara Johnson's hiding behind us there, and Lee Rowley and George Perkins from the committee on here tonight. So, who's going to start with the agreement? Dave?
Good evening, everybody. David Young with CDM Smith. I'd like to just show you a few slides. I think they're all slides that you have seen previously, but just to give an overview for tonight's meeting and to refresh everyone's memory. The DHY agreement, which is the main focus of tonight's meeting, again, that encompasses Dennis Harwich in Yarmouth for wastewater treatment and effluent recharge. We're going to talk about that, give a brief overview of status. Rich is going to go through the financing plan. Then you'll hear from some of the Water Resources Advisory Committee members about the differences between the town doing their own plan and the DHY agreement. And then we'll talk a little bit, review the agenda for the three-town selectmen's meeting coming up on February 27th, and then that will lead into a discussion of potential town meeting articles for this spring. So, the agreement. The key changes that have been made recently have really been fine tuning, but have been discussions, and a lot of you folks here have brought those issues to the forefront. And then we've brought them back to the subgroup, which is representative of small three towns who have been meeting monthly for over two years now. The first one is the commission budget process. We reviewed this when I was here last month, and the process starts, they have to issue a budget in November, and then they have a hold a public hearing so that anyone in the public from any of the three towns can come and comment and hear about that proposed budget. But ultimately, after they go through the budget process, which I'll show a little bit more detail in a couple of slides, requires five positive votes now, which means someone from Yarmouth, one of those commissioners, has to vote for the budget under any scenario. And then the final budget also must reflect, because they have to pass it by January 15th, it must reflect the comments of the joint Board of Selectmen meeting that would be held late December, early January. Other minor items that have been made as well, I think we actually might have reviewed a couple of these, but more recently, the Dennis Commissioners and the Dennis Board of Selectmen, the end of December voted to endorse the agreement as it stood at that time. Any major changes would certainly come back to them. But the one change they did make is there are two commissioners. One is appointed by the Board of Selectmen, and one is now appointed by the Finance Committee. It used to be the town moderator. There was nuances there, as then the moderator appoints the Finance Committee, but they fine tuned it to be the Finance Committee. And then a suggestion that had come here, and it's been tightened up, that no payment in lieu of taxes for any of the DHY facilities, so any facility in any town, there would be no payment in lieu of taxes. And amendments shall be ratified at the next available town meeting, whether it's a special held or the annual, and passed by majority vote versus it just said needed to be passed at a town meeting. So, we've been listening, and we've been trying to make those adjustments, and the subgroup has endorsed those anyway. And those are all reflected in the version of the agreement that's in your packet and is posted on the DHY website. Again, just to review the budget process, because this seems to have been the section that has generated the most interest in the overall agreement. In November, the commissioners, by a majority vote, would issue a draft budget. Then during November, December, they would have public input, one being a formal public hearing. Then December, January, the commission can make changes, but they would present a budget to a three-town joint Board of Selectmen meeting. The goal would be to have those selectmen who are present, a minimum of two from each community, for a majority, or a minimum majority of, well, quorum, I should say, of eight, that the budget would be passed by majority vote at that time. In any case, even if it doesn't pass, the reasons for not passing it need to be put in writing so that the commissioners can either make adjustments at that time or come back at a later date with responses to those issues raised. But in any instance, by January 15th, as I said earlier, with a minimum of five positive votes, the commissioners must endorse a budget so that it can be sent out to the towns for capital planning purposes and budgeting purposes by February 1st. And so if they pass it and the selectmen hadn't passed or voted for their budget at that meeting, they have to take into account and document and the reasons and make sure that that has been reflected in the budget that they put forth. And I should also add that while I've been saying budget, and most people would think annual budget at that point, they also are presenting a five-year capital plan so that you'll know what's coming in the next year, two through five, as well, so that there were no surprises. There is a third party. We've been referring to it as a peer review ongoing right now. The firm of Weston and Sampson was hired by the commission or by the DHY subgroup to review the costs that have been prepared by ourselves previously and to review the agreement. One of the reasons Weston and Sampson was selected is they were also involved in the development of the MFN Regional Wastewater District Agreement, presenting the town in Norton at that time. We held the workshop back on January 30th to review how the costs have been generated. There's a document that's probably two inches thick of memos that, I believe you've seen most of them, if not all of them. But they were generated, given to Weston and Sampson to review, backup spreadsheets, you name it. And we also went through the agreement, and there were representatives from all three towns at that meeting, which explained why there are certain provisions incorporated into this agreement. While we started with the MFN template, there were several sections that are actually quite different now and tailored to Dennis Harwich in Yarmouth, the budget process being one. That peer review cost findings is currently ongoing. The goal is for them to give a report out at that three-town selectmen's meeting on February 27th. Schedule going forward, the DHY subgroup continues to meet monthly. Their next meeting is actually this coming Friday. Local meetings to discuss the draft agreement and costs, like the one here tonight, are ongoing as well in each of the three towns. Again, the peer review, the three-town Board of Selectmen meeting, the 27th. The goal would be to have the selectmen from the three towns take a formal position on that agreement as to whether they support or not, leading to a town meeting, hopefully an article for the spring town meeting. So between January and March, there would be local educational-type meetings for the public, town meeting members, a chance to educate them on what's in the agreement, answer any questions they have, so that people are informed, leading to the town meeting. Your town meeting is late April. Harwich and Dennis have theirs the first week of May. Should the agreement be adopted by majority vote in each of the three towns, by special legislation, which was passed on October 15th and signed by the governor, the DHY Clean Waters Community Partnership would actually be enacted. So then the three towns would actually sign the document in the June-July timeframe, appoint their commissioners. You would appoint your three commissioners. Then in the summer, the commission would be up and running. They would have the ability to then pursue working with your local Cape delegation, the million dollars that was put in the environmental bond bill last year. You know, it's not sitting there waiting for you to go get the check. You've got to work with the delegation to make sure the money is actually put behind it, and then make sure that we submit whatever documentation is required to access it. But that could be the initial money to be utilized to get the partnership up and running. The commissioners would then select a part-time executive director to start doing some of the day-to-day operations of that, and then lead into, ultimately into a two-year design period, followed by a three-year construction and sewer connection tie-ins theoretically from the towns following up and doing the work on their collection systems. I know this is very difficult to read, but it's really just a, it's a sales pitch for a new LCD, is what it is. But that really is just a bar chart form of what I reviewed, and it just shows out to the full construction period. So you're looking five years out, even if you pass DHY this spring, before the first drop of water is actually received and treated and then recharged back into the groundwater table.
So just to be clear, when you say three years, you're talking about the first phase?
Yes. What I was talking there would be two years to design the treatment plant and effluent recharge facilities, and then construct those. Obviously, the towns would have to design and construct their collection systems to ultimately get wastewater there, so that's really the critical path.
So to be clear, the three years going to be, is that going to be for the towns to do their collection system part? Is that what you're talking about? And then in terms of a timeline, where does the first phase of the, of the plant, when does that happen?
Well, that's what I'm saying. What I was talking was the DHY facilities. What's separate is the town, but presumably along the same timeline, as you would be doing two years to design your collection system, and then three years to construct it.
Okay.
And do start your tie-ins. Some communities are looking, they had started with a one-year period for mandatory tie-ins. Some of them are looking to go to two years now, just due to logistics.
So you contemplate kind of a parallel course between the local construction work and the DHY construction work?
Yes, it's sort of the chicken or the egg. You have to have the treatment plant ready to receive the wastewater.
Yeah.
But there's nothing to receive if you haven't built your collection system and conveyed it to the treatment plant.
Okay, thank you.
Let me ask one question about the, about the document. I think one of the questions I have is, and I didn't see it, I don't think there is a provision that would allow, so when we've talked about this in the past, we know that the major expenditure will be really just a one-time shot. It's going to be the first built, you know, the number that we need to build it. After that, it will be maintenance upgrades, something like that, which is appropriately handled in the budgetary process. What my concern is, is passing, passing the agreement at town meeting and the possibility of not being able to fund it. So I'm wondering if the agreement has any provision in it that starts the clock ticking when the town has a funding authority. As I said, bringing this to town meeting without, without a ballot for the dollars, they kind of need to go together. But even at that, I mean, even if they do go together at the same time, you pass this, they're going to, I mean, at that time, it allows them to move forward, start the process, hire, start the construction, and basically, we're going to get a bill. So if we don't have a ballot passed, that's very, very concerning, because that could be devastating with the debt service to the town if we can't get a ballot passed. I know we have a lot of the funding, but I imagine that there'd be a ballot question that would authorize some borrowing.
Do you want me to take that?
I know we're going to get to the money part. I just mean.
We'll get to the money part.
In terms of, in terms of this agreement, though, is there anything that protects us should we not be able to get the funding in place?
Well, it depends on what you mean by protect. It's not in the agreement, but in the legislation itself, the DHY district is similar to other joint entities like Cape Cod Commission, for example, where we get an assessment from the Cape Cod Commission. We don't take votes every year on that assessment. It gets added to our tax levy. That's the default position of this type of entity. So in other words, we get a, an assessment from DHY, and as part of the enabling legislation, absent anything, it's added to the tax levy.
Without a ballot?
Without a ballot.
So we have.
So it does get a little confusing, because a town meeting vote, we've had special legislation which allows for that, and a town meeting vote would therefore enact that special legislation on the DHY plant, which will be different from the much larger costs, 75% of the costs of our eight-phase collection system, which the town owns and controls, and therefore each of those would need, doesn't necessarily need a ballot, it only needs to be a ballot, ballot question if you want to make it exempt. If you have it funded otherwise within your budget, it doesn't require a ballot, it just requires town meeting votes or the bond authorizations. But each phase, you know, likely, you know, our tradition here is you do planning design, get bids based on that design, and then get a construction authorization. That would occur for each of the eight phases currently planned, which we all know will probably be something different than the, the eight phases, but that would occur.
But not all of them involving this agreement. This agreement really essentially is for Phase One, the construction, correct? The major construction with this agreement.
This agreement, as I, I think I've mentioned before, and we've had a lot of talk about the budget and what might be in the budget for DHY. Remember, DHY is just the treatment plant. It's all that DHY does, is build and operate a treatment plant. Each community is responsible for its own collection system, which is about 75% of the overall cost. And so a vote to form DHY basically does exempt their assessment for operating the plant and the debt service associated with building the plant. That being said, we'll talk about in a minute the financing plan. If the financing plan were to come to fruition, you cannot raise monies that you've otherwise funded. And so that's how you accomplish that. You, you raise the money otherwise, and the state doesn't allow you to raise the money twice. If you raise money for wastewater, in one regard, you can, therefore cannot raise taxes or any other revenues to pay for it twice.
I guess the only other thing I'd add is that was the reason we've added in that they have to do a five-year capital plan look ahead. So you know what you're actually looking at, not just that year, but two, three, four, five out. So there are no surprises, and you know, you know, if your funding plan needs to be tweaked or whatever needs to be done, you know what the projected bill is coming your way.
I guess I've got a question regarding the, the commission that controls the collection system. Based on this chart, time chart, what I'm seeing is that apparently the commissioners should be appointed, and I would think about the same timeframe, as the DHY partnership commissioner or for the plant would be appointed. It looks like contracts going out to bid in the summer of this year for the design of the collection system. Is that right?
You're the wastewater, sewer commissioners. Within the town, you're the sewer commissioners right now.
Okay.
So I would envision you're going to work with DPW to accomplish what we need to on a local level.
Yeah, it's probably a little confusing in DHY versus, you are the Yarmouth Sewer Commissioners versus the DHY Commissioners, but it's meant to be, as Selectman Stone said, in parallel. You know, you would be doing your actions to hire your collection system designer, and then two years out, probably be going to construction. So they'd be bidding and helping you oversee the construction portion. Okay.
Out of curiosity, are the commissioners for the in-town collection system going to be the same in Dennis and Harwich and the Selectmen, the commissioners there as well?
Dan, you probably know better, but I believe under state law, unless it's designated otherwise, the selectmen are the designated sewer commissioners. I know in Harwich, their board voted to maintain, their Board of Selectmen voted to maintain sewer commission status during design and construction, and once things, a portion goes to, into operation, they're switching it over to the Water and Sewer Commission, which is an elected board. So they actually have a divide. They maintain control of what they want it to look like, where it's going, and what have you. Once it goes into operation, it goes into the Water and Sewer Commission. I believe Dennis, though, is all with the Board of Selectmen.
Thanks. Any other questions at this point?
No.
Dave, are you done with this, or do you have anything else to add before we go to Rich?
Unless you have any other questions, I think Rich is going to do the next piece on the finance.
Okay.
So thanks for having us. We spent a lot of time working with the Water Resource Advisory Committee at their monthly meetings, sometimes more than one in a month, going over all these details. They put together a lot of information, much of which, but not all of which, is in the 91-page packet you have in front of you. And what I'm focusing on right now, which will kind of dovetail into a lot of other discussions, is in your packet, but I have standalone copies of the recommended financing plan from the Water Resource Advisory Committee. They've actually taken a vote to recommend this financing plan to the Board of Selectmen as an approach to fund the wastewater implementation. And the plan for the financing is pretty much the same regardless of whether you do a Yarmouth-only option or if you elect to pursue partnership with DHY. Only the costs would be different, but the funding sources are the same. You might recall in some of the prior handouts. You might recall, in some of the prior handouts, this slide here, it shows the Phase One cost summary. And this is, I want to just bring this up because it's different from what we'll be talking about, and I'll explain why. But this was our engineering estimates of cost, comparing the town capital costs to the DHY regional costs. Likewise, the operations and maintenance costs for the town's solution versus the regional solution, and an equivalent annual cost. You can see that, and a regional approach saves a little over a million, 1.2 or so million dollars per year on equivalent annual costs. But the thing to note here is this assumes interest at 2%. And so I really want to emphasize that. The projections that the Water Resource Advisory Committee have been working with, and as we've been reporting to you, our financing plan, are that, under the assumption that we will qualify and receive a 0% loan through the state SRF loan program. We feel like we're in very good position to do so. And to that end, at the three-town Board of Selectmen meeting coming up on the, the end of the month, we have representatives from SRF to come in front of you to speak to that topic. One of the advantages that the RAC committee members might point out to you in their contemplation of recommending participating in DHY is the sense that participating in a regional solution earns additional consideration, or points, if you may, in earning that 0% loan. And this isn't exact, but I've tried to simplify some of these presentations to make it easier to talk about. So for talking purposes here, a 2% loan versus a 0% loan is about a $40 million difference over the life of the debt service of 30 years. A 1% loan would be about $20 million. So in your packet, it's in the, the top right, they're labeled with the numbers, page 46 of 91, this slide here. This displays the overall, just the capital side of things, the Yarmouth option compared to the DHY option. Under Yarmouth option, the total capital cost is $132,510,000 versus $126,785 through DHY. So there's a, a five, six million dollar difference between the two on capital costs. But if you divide that by 30, and there's no interest, so it's a straight calculation of those numbers divided by 30, the annual debt service is 4.4 million for Town of Yarmouth only versus DHY for 4.2 million. What's not in these calculations, and I'll point out to you, and it is in their overall plan where they discuss this, is Yarmouth saves significantly, not necessarily on the capital costs, and Dave could explain if you have a question as to why that is, some of the mechanics of that, but we do save significantly on the operating costs. It's like $920,000 a year of operating savings. And that becomes a very important consideration because although it's not reflected in our debt service, our cost recovery plan does rely upon a surcharge on user rates. And in order for that to happen, the user rates need to be relatively affordable. You can't price yourself out of that market. So as you might recall, there's four main categories of funding sources that would pay for that debt service. The first that we've talked about quite a bit, and we'll get into in the details, is the Water Infrastructure Investment Fund. The Water Resource Advisory Committee has recommended that in order to achieve funding with the stated goal of the Board of Selectmen to not raise the operating, the property tax rate, general property tax rate, that a surcharge of 1.5% would be needed to fund this program. That 1.5% on average equates to about $1.45 million per year. There's also user-generated revenues, accounting for about $1.1 million a year. User-generated revenues represent a 25% capital surcharge on the operating rate. So in other words, if you're a high water user and you had a, a water, a sewer rate of $1,000, similar to a water rate, we would add 25% additional surcharge on that, so a total of 1,025, with that extra amount going to the debt service associated with the plant and the collection system. Another piece of this has to do with a betterment program. We're contemplating charging a betterment. Many of the users along Phase One, as you'll recall, Phase One being Route 28 from the town line in Barnstable to the town line in Dennis, with some smaller connections down by the Bass River area, but largely a commercial phase with a lot of high-volume, high-use water users. And they will see significant benefits for the ability to develop their properties, and so a betterment program was contemplated in this regard to recover for those costs and that, those benefits those properties are receiving. It represents 20% of the collection system cost, and we would require special legislation to follow through on our plan, not unique, other communities have done this, but basically to have the betterment based on flows. So the more that you use, the more you would pay. And the expectation is, as we design this program, that we'd exclude a certain level of flow. For example, 70,000 gallons for, I use 70,000 gallons because that represents the average residential use. And there are few residential properties in this phase. So by eliminating the first 70,000 gallons of water usage, that means that the residential properties that are in this phase would not pay a betterment, and that the commercial properties that do have high water use would pay a larger betterment. If we're getting our money at a 0% loan, our betterment would not be at a, would have just marginal interest of 1 or 2% most likely. And so those payments would be added to their tax bill as a betterment payable over 30 years. And so the example I used when we went and talked to several commercial property owners along Route 28, just to do a sensitivity analysis or a case analysis of what they might think of this, is I used the example of a, how would you feel if your hotel or your restaurant was required to pay a $300,000 betterment? And I'm sure there's somebody out there that wouldn't like that, but of all the people we spoke to, when we talked it out, and they realized that that's over 30 years, and that really is basically $10,000 a year, versus doing their own financing and own installation of their own onsite septic system and having to maintain and operate their system over that same period of time, they realized the value in that. And there didn't seem to be any large resistance to that type of, of betterment. In any event, we add up all those calculated amounts and the 25% surcharge, and we get $1.1 million of user-generated revenues. We had been talking for quite a while about the new short-term rental tax that is now collected on third-party rentals. Prior to this year, it was just on existing hotels and motels. Yarmouth's local option of 6% excise has been expanded to third-party rentals, and we have an estimate, a high estimate, a low estimate, and our mid-range estimate of about $570,000 of what we hoping to collect with these new revenues. And that is, that mid-range estimate of $570,000 is new revenues that we would ask you to commit to wastewater financing. In addition, we have had several solar projects go online recently, and working on another, at least one other. And we believe that we can, through savings on our energy budget, or at least not increasing of our energy budget, realize savings of about $125,000 from those efforts. And so those two sources of local receipts have been added into the financing plan totaling Then finally, the fourth area has to do with the Water Protection Trust. As you might recall, as part of the new legislation on the short-term rentals, not only does Yarmouth get to collect its local option of 6%, there's a new 2.75% also exercised on all rentals, and that goes to the Cape and Islands Water Protection Trust, and Selectman Post is the town's representative to that board. Still remains to be seen exactly how the town will benefit. They're, they're working through their bylaws and coming up with those rules of how the to equitably distribute money generated from each community back to each community. We did do some estimates, however, and our best estimates at this point are that about $1.57 million per year of that money is being generated by the Yarmouth community. It's not from Yarmouth taxpayers, it's from our visitors to our community, and so it's a key thing to remember. In any event, absent explicit direction from that group as to exactly how that's going to look in the future, we've had to use some estimates, and what several communities have agreed is a reasonable planning estimate at this point is to use 25% of the total project costs as a potential for reimbursement, and that's what we did here. And as a sensitivity check, that comes out to a little over a million bucks a year. And if we're generating 1.5, almost 1.6 million dollars, it represents about two-thirds of what our community is generating, we think that's a reasonable approach at this point. So all told, we've got four sources. Those four sources, I'm just going to look at the DHY option, just so we don't bounce back and forth too much. If the DHY option costs $4.2 million for debt service, we've got funding sources that come up to $4.3 million if they all were to materialize as we are estimating. Of course, that's a summary. And so in your packet, the subsequent pages are some cash flows on various scenarios. Probably what I'll do, I do have some handouts.
Rich, I'm sure you have this information, but the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust from July 1st to November, through November 2019, has, has collected a total of 7.731 million. Yarmouth is the second highest at 1.33 million in terms of what it collected now. Most people should know that the majority of what was collected in July was, or this past summer, if it was, if they booked those rooms prior to the, to the law, then they were exempt. So these are what we probably would consider fairly low numbers going forward.
See, one of our representatives from our local community, business community here, who's reminded me a couple of times that their estimates from the Realtors Association was at 60%, tell me if I'm wrong, Ryan, of short-term rentals were booked prior to January 1, so not reflected in those numbers, which you would expect to see in the second full year of operation of that tax. And that's an important point to keep in mind as we go through our discussion here, because what I just handed out to you is kind of the cash flows in some various scenarios. And this is key to interests of our CPC community as well, because out of those four scenarios, the one we can control the most, other than those local receipts, is the Water Infrastructure Fund. And so, in getting to that $4.3 million of funding, the Water Resource Advisory Committee has indicated and recommended a WIF of 1.5%. And they haven't indicated to you how you might go about implementing that, but, you know, what's been under discussion for a number of years has been an equivalent reduction in the CPC. And of course, you've heard from the CPC as to their feelings as to that. And in fact, they offer, actually offered an alternative. And that alternative was, instead of a percent increase in the WIF and a percent, equivalent percent reduction in the CPA surcharge, perhaps we could consider a residential exemption. And so let me walk you through that quickly and show you how that, what that looks like. But this chart that's in front of you, and what I just handed out to you, shows the, the cash flow of the WIFs, of the RAC's plan at 1.5%. Does somebody have that?
Another copy.
What page is that in the presentation, Rich?
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
What page is that? Is it the big packet?
That would be easier if I, uh...
Are you sure everybody have one?
This is the same, no, this is the same one.
On the packet, what's included in the packet, I just wanted to include this just for your reference, but this is what was put in front of you in the past with regard to a full 1.5%. And the point here is that it funded the plan, and there are very few years in which you were short. And to the extent you might have been short in any particular year, there was surplus that was built up because we prefunded through an enterprise fund monies to be able to cover those shortfalls. But in your packet, on page 65, shows that plan. So as Dave laid out to you on the timeline, construction, design and construction is a multi-year period. We wouldn't contemplate having to pay our full debt service until the year 2025. So between now and then, this Water Infrastructure Fund and other sources that we can identify would go into a reserve and pre-fund our plan to protect us against any shortage in any particular year. Under that 1.5% option, the pre-funding comes up to almost $7.1 million before we have to start paying the $4.2 million of annual debt service. But then the question was asked, or the, the alternative was presented to us of, could we just do the exemption? And so we considered that and did the calculations, and the $100,000 CPA residential exemption, which what it would do is take the first $100,000, the CPA surcharge currently is 3%, applies to the value of each residential property. The $100,000 residential exemption would exempt the first $100,000 of every residential property. And so, and that would generate $500,000 less of CPA revenue, which is on the tax bills, so therefore theoretically reducing the tax burden to the town by $500,000. Now, the, one of the attractive points of that approach is it's equally distributed. And so if you have a $300,000 house, you get a $100,000 exemption. If you have a million-dollar house, you get a $100,000 residential exemption. 3% of the 100, of the 100,000 or 300 bucks, everybody gets the 300 bucks. I guess you miss out if your house is worth 98,000, you don't quite get the full value. But by and large, everybody gets the same benefit. Whereas if you have a reduction of a CPA surcharge of the 1.5%, it's not equitably distributed. You've got a 3% of 300,000, I mean, 1.5% of 300,000 is less than 1.5% of a million. Don't ask me to give you the numbers. $750 versus $1,500. So the problem, though, is the exemption alone doesn't quite work. And this is what on page 66 indicates. This is the cash flow of a, I did the calculation, to get to the exact $500,000 CPA reduction would be the equivalent of a 0.78% Water Infrastructure Fund.
Page 66, I don't know where 66 is.
He's got, he has, it's just not, the packet's not numbered, so this is 66.
It's in the upper right-hand corner.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
Oh, yeah. So if you look through that page, you'll see that that pre-funds by the year 2025, if you look all the way over to the cumulative funding column, we've looked at these sheets before, so they're all similar to what you've seen in the past. But all the way to the right, cumulative funding surplus at the end of 2024 is $5 million. But you see that 0.78 isn't quite enough to pay for that $4.2 million of debt service. And so we start using that surplus. And by the year 2032, if all these projections held true, we'd start being short. And so the conclusion on that is a 0.78% water infrastructure fund equal to the just the $100,000 residential exclusion of CPA isn't sufficient, which really ought to be a surprise because the RAC had done the recommendation of the 1.5. But what could you do differently? Let's go to page 67. What if you did the same 0.78% in the pre-funding phase? Because you don't, you aren't paying the debt service yet, you're just accumulating resources. And under that scenario, you get the same $5 million accumulated prior to your debt service. In that first year that your debt service kicks in, you will be short $621,000. So you use some of that surplus. And in that sixth year, you'd have to kick in the water infrastructure fund at 1.5%. And if you were to play that out, you'd see that that also works.
In addition to the exemption? Are you saying in five years you'd switch from the exemption or the exemption and then add another percent and a half?
So what's that saying is, if you were to do an exemption today and match it with a 0.78% water infrastructure fund, so no change in taxes, and did that for five years, you'd be okay for those five years. That sixth year, though, you'd have to take some further action. And if you were to follow along with the recommendation, that action would be a 1.5% water infrastructure fund. Again, with no particular recommendation as to how you might do that to keep it tax-neutral. But the contemplation also being, we have a lot of moving parts here. And so the costs are moving parts. They're estimates. Each of our funding sources is a moving part. Perhaps we could do better on our betterment and our surcharge. Perhaps we can do better on the new short-term rentals than the $570,000 that are in the projection. Perhaps we can do better on what we're getting from the Water Protection Trust. And to the extent we can, that reduces the need to do anything further in the future on the WIF. And I'd also submit to you, is on the conference call with our Community Development Department today, talking to the Economic Development Agency through the Department of Commerce, is very interested in working with the town of Yarmouth and has already awarded a similar grant to Bourne, up to $3 million for design and engineering of our plant and collection system. They want to know that we're actually moving forward before they can commit anything to us, and it's a long application process, so nothing's guaranteed. But my point being is that's one funding source we've identified that we can tap into when we know we're moving forward that would reduce costs. And so guess what this plan would do to you? It would buy you five years of time to see how all this shakes out. John?
We're talking about a financing plan for Phase 1.
Phase 1.
Which includes the DHY treatment plant and the construction down 28 with a few additions. So if in fact the real game plan was to implement ultimately all eight phases of the town, and one would assume doing it faster is better than doing it slower, I would think that the town would want to be in a financial position where it could begin Phase 2, Phase 3 at the earliest possible dates. Because with Phase 1, we're going to pick up the commercial aspects of the town, but at the day 1 of Phase 1, even if everybody on 28 is on board, we still haven't serviced 99% of the residents in the town. So with an eye towards having a financial plan that has strength in it so that we can accelerate Phases 2, 3, 4, et cetera, I would think we would want to continue the mentality of being a little ahead of the game in terms of having revenue at hand, as opposed to a system where we were just, if you will, coming close to the current obligations. It's also not a bad idea to have some reserve in case there's some unforeseen contingencies once we get underway.
And I guess what I would add to that as well is, there's a lot of moving parts, as I said, and we don't know how this is all going to shake out. But if you look at that page 67, that indicates the 0.78% WIF for the six-year period, for the pre-funding period, and a conversion to 1.5%. Or I would submit an increase in any of the other funding sources or reductions of costs. That, if you look at that cumulative funding column, that's increasing. And we're generating significant revenues that could go towards that. And then also point out, we've had this discussion before, that this funding plan does not rely on any new growth from development. You've heard me say that Yarmouth is among the lowest new property tax growth rates on Cape Cod at 0.72% or something like that, where our neighbors are at 0.63%. And our neighbors are about double that. We do, and we did have an economic development report done that indicated about $100 million of pent-up demand, which means it's demand that would happen in the near term, relatively speaking. And that development would generate about $1 million of new property tax growth above and beyond what we're normally generating. Despite that, none of those figures are in this funding plan. So to John's point, if we were to do something and realize that development and that new tax growth, and you could identify that within this five- or six-year period, that would probably influence your decision as to what you needed to do in Year 6. My overall point being is a lot can change. And so, and similar to what we say when people ask us about, well, what's going to happen to me when I got a hookup in 25 years in Phase 6? The answer is, I really can't answer that for you right now, because it's so far down the line. And so I keep reminding people to, it won't mean anything if we don't get started. And Phase 1 is the start.
Rich, I have a question regarding the 2025, the betterments. You talked about the fact that the betterments would, there would be an exemption for the first, what was it, $70,000 gallons a year?
Well, we haven't developed a betterment program, but to the extent we've discussed it, we would need to finalize the details, but the discussion has been, betterments are appropriate for our commercial property owners. They're going to be significant, you know, their ability to redevelop their properties provides significant value that a betterment reflects. The payment of a betterment reflects that value being received. Now, we could argue about residential property owners also getting a benefit, but following the tenor of prior discussions and prior years and prior efforts, we did not want to have a betterment to residential property owners. So how do you get, how do you eliminate that happening to a residential property owner when the phase that we're planning is asking for betterments? And the way you do that is, just like on the CPA residential exemption of $100,000, except we're talking about water flows. We'd exempt the first X amount of water flows for residential properties so that they don't need to pay betterment, and it shifts it all over to the commercial users, high-water users.
Right. And I was wondering what the value of that is for each household that would be hooked up in the, you know, the next five years, 2025? Because that appears to be the first time that betterments start showing up. And I guess that most of that would be commercial betterments.
Well, it would be commercial if our plan worked the way we're expecting it to. And the reason it starts in 2025 is because you can't collect a betterment until you've got someone connected and they're actually flowing wastewater.
I guess what I'm going with this is, it seems to me, you know, the CPA exemption applies to all households. And the betterment, I won't call it an exemption, but the first $70,000 gallons also applies to all the residential users.
All users.
Does it make sense to give both in that situation? I mean, why would we?
So a betterment is basically an amount, it's a fixed amount. We know the fixed amount, it's about $10 million for talking purposes here, that we're looking to recover as a betterment.
Right. But why? I guess what I'm getting at is, why would the residential users get an exemption to the cost to the other people who are not hooked up to the system? It just seems to me, what this is forcing essentially is, in Year 5, is a bump up unless other things come out very positively, this is forcing a bump up in our taxes by three-quarters of a percent roughly.
I think the direction that the RAC was operating under, and I certainly was operating under, and I helped them put this together, is that we wanted to avoid residential betterments.
Right.
And that would, you know, because that's the question we would get when we held our public forums, would be, how much is it going to cost me in a betterment? And the answer is, we hope zero. You're in Phase 2, which is, you know, largely residential neighborhoods. We didn't want residents to be paying a betterment. And so the residential portion of this Phase 1 is negligible. The vast majority of it is a commercial district. This was just a way to, it doesn't shift, we're still raising the exact same amount of money in betterment, it's just we're shifting.
I understand.
Essentially what it does, it shifts the cost between the residential taxpayer to the commercial taxpayer.
All I'm saying is, you're giving two benefits to the residential user. One is the exemption, and the second is a reduction in CPA funding. And so then you're having to turn around and collect some of that money back from people who aren't on the system. That doesn't ring true with me.
Yeah, but I think one of the things to keep in mind is that residential user who's getting that betterment is also going to now pay a user charge. So it was to help offset the fact that that residential customer is paying a user's charge because they're connected to the sewer system versus people who are on the CPA exemption aren't if they're not connected.
And the 25% surcharge for the capital debt service. And those people that aren't connected to the system, although they might be contributing to a water infrastructure fund, or have that offset by the CPA reduction.
You're not necessarily suggesting that that other three-quarters of a percent comes off the property taxes, correct? I mean, it might come off new growth, for example.
Right. There's any number of ways that differential between the 0.78% and the 1.5% that's been identified as the need could occur. And I think what this is suggesting, if I might be as bold to say this, is that it's buying you time to see how all these things shake out. There's a lot of moving parts on the financing side. And as a matter of fact, there might even be potential new funding sources that are being discussed about that might be available to us in five years' time that aren't contemplated. And if those were to come to fruition, we could take advantage of those in lieu of any other number of things.
Aren't there some programs on the Cape that have some debt, in addition to SRF just being zero, they have some debt forgiveness as well?
Part of the SRF program, and I haven't talked yet, we've been into weeds here.
No, sorry. I get excited.
Part of all these costs, we've been talking about the financing side, but I mentioned the costs. Dave mentioned this earlier, we're having a separate peer review of these costs. And as part of that process, we had a workshop where those peer reviewers came in and listened to us talk about the process we went through in developing the agreement for DHY, and then talked about some specific discussions related to costs that are driving the costs of this project. And the comments of the peer reviewer was, if you had gotten a loan this year, you would have qualified for a 6.6% subsidy. So that alone could be a way to make up that differential if we can continue to qualify for that subsidy. Again, that is also an unknown. As I pointed out to you earlier, the engineering estimates use a 2% interest rate in their cost estimates. The RAC, in evaluating this, is taking the position that, you know, one of our assumptions is, we're qualifying for 0%. It is a possibility that you actually get the subsidy and costs could go down. And we do have SRF folks coming to talk to you on February 27th in that regard. And one of the big points in all of that, not to get too far afield here, but is timing. It's a limited pool of funds available for the subsidy and a limited pool of funds available for the 0%. And if you are doing this at a time when you've got multiple projects in Barnstable, Falmouth, Sandwich, and Bourne also submitting projects, there might not be enough money to go around to do that. The good news is, we've got some time on them. We've got a little bit of a lead on them.
Let me ask my question a different way. How much is a $70,000 exemption worth?
Standing here today, Norm, I don't know that off the top of my head, but I certainly can, when I reply back to some questions I have, I can let the board know that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're talking about the gallons, $70,000 gallons.
Right.
The only reason I say that for clarification is for people out there who may be watching this or may want to watch it in the future. So as an educational piece, so we make that clear.
Couple of clarifying points on all this that we've been talking about. Just to round out the CPA surcharge discussion for a second. We're talking about the residential exemption for CPA. It's the $100,000 exclusion. For those listening at home or might watch this later, do not confuse that, or for your board members here, do not confuse that with the annual residential exemption that the Board of Selectmen get to decide every single year when they set the tax rate. This is what other communities have done, not for funding wastewater, but just for relief to their resident, their year-round residents. And usually those are done in communities that are largely non-resident communities, where you have 70% or so plus non-resident homeowners and 30%, for example, resident homeowners. It makes a lot of sense because you're shifting some of that tax burden from the residents, who are relatively small in the overall calculation of the tax levy, to the large portion of non-residents. That is a totally separate discussion, and that's not what's being contemplated or recommended by the RAC in this plan. But it is an option available to this Board of Selectmen every single year. And some communities have started to pursue, and what that might mean to them. The CPA residential exemption is much easier, as I explained. Everybody on just the CPA surcharge calculation gets the first $100,000 excluded. I also wanted to talk about a couple elements of the costs in our peer review workshop, particularly, specifically brought up because I knew it was interest of the board. We did have some discussion with our peer review group on the carrying costs of recharge sites. And so I bring that up because one of the recharge sites for the DHY district is the Bass River Golf Course. To remind you, it's also a recharge site if the town of Yarmouth decides to go on its own. It's just a matter of timing. It's just a matter of timing. So, a recharge site at Bass River would occur within some point within the next five years, whereas if we were to do it as a Yarmouth only solution, it would be our secondary recharge site in 10 to 15 years. In any event, we'd have to put in infiltration beds at the Bass River Golf Course. And so, of course, we've got a lot of discussion about what does that mean to costs and to the operation of the course. So, part of, what the peer review team will be looking at is evaluating the costs. Right now, we are carrying about $5.5 million in this overall project costs for that site, that Bass River Golf Course. And so what that would do, and these aren't specifics, but, you know, presumably, you disrupt that golf course to put in infiltration beds, you're going to restore it to a new product, but in a similar layout. You're not going to be changing it a lot, but you'd get a new golf course with the existing layout. If the town of Yarmouth decided that it wanted to do something further, or additional, or make it further improvements, or change it, I'm sure that option would be available to us, but I suspect that additional cost associated with those would be on us to do. But, the bottom line is, we're carrying $5.5 million to input, to put in those beds and re-lay out the greens and fairways with the golf course, to put it in a new condition for where it's disturbed.
Is that just construction costs, not loss of income?
So, we did talk about that at the DHY working group, and conceptually, I don't think there's an opposition to paying for that, but where the tough decision, tough discussion there would be, what's income? Are you talking about our gross revenues of a couple million dollars? Or are you talking about our net income, which, depending on the year, could be a loss, or it could be a small profit? And so, I think, conceptually, there's agreement that, yes, it covers something to that effect, but, sitting here tonight, I don't know that we know exactly, because there's a wide range of what that could be. But, I'll let maybe Dave have a couple comments, but I know he's working with a golf course architect to discuss and flush out these costs and the options available to that.
Yeah, just to add a little bit, we have your golf course architect, who's worked with you recently on Babri Hills, Tim Garrish, under sub-agreement. We had been looking last summer at some options for making improvements to the golf course, either new routing layouts, or looking at training centers, or nine holes, and other things. So, we presented some of those findings. We've had a subgroup meeting, but we presented some of those findings to the golf course committee last August. They essentially endorsed the new layout that had been proposed. But then, when you folks got into discussions on, you know, the whole golf course, what you're going to do with your courses, we sort of put pens down to try to figure out where the town was headed in the golf industry, anyway. And I know you were getting your analysis done from the National Golf Federation as well. So, when we met with you back, I think it was the first week of January, and that issue came up, since then, we've restarted looking at the costs, looking for the F1 recharge portion, as well as putting that in, and just putting back the course essentially the way it is, versus the option of putting it back with the recommended layout that the golf committee had endorsed. So, that's all actively ongoing right now, but there's a whole host of issues that, you know, will need to be decided once that concept is endorsed, such as, you know, what's the timeline for building it? Which plan does the town of Yarmouth want to endorse? So, as Rich said, we've been carrying 5.3, 5.5 million in the cost to date, which is off unit cost. That's what we're carrying for the F1 recharge at golf courses in Dennis, on a unit basis, not that full amount. So, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we'll have some further costs, but there's several issues that will still need to be flushed out, once the three towns decide to move forward with that process. But as Rich indicated, we brought it up at the subgroup meeting last month, and there was unanimous support that, yes, you know, when we say construction costs, we mean what it costs to build it, what the costs are that, you know, would impact the town of Yarmouth for, if it's taken out for a year, or two six-month periods, or whatever is done. All of those costs would be factored in. There was some discussion of whether we put something to that effect in one of the transition items in the agreement, if we feel we had to do that, if that's, would make you more comfortable. But, there was unanimous support for doing that, and actually, I think there was a recommendation to try to get the golf directors from the three towns together, because I think it had been brought up, you know, you want to make sure you don't lose your staff. The other two towns jumped at the opportunity to utilize your staff. So, I think, you know, again, all three towns have an impetus to make this work. Nobody's looking to make sure that, you know, they get it cheap and you get impacted, because, you know, down the road, it's going to be in the town of Dennis, the same thing. So this is going to set, sort of, the model, the template, for what happens later at the other sites. The same goes, you know, for the town of Dennis at their DPW site. You know, the commission will have to work out, you know, access routes, and all kinds of things, so that they're not impacting the operations at their DPW site. Little bit different scenario, but yet, same type of coordination will need to go on between the commission and the community entity.
So is the 5.5 million dollars just putting it back the way it is, or is that the plan that was endorsed by the Board?
That 5.5 is what we're carrying for the F1 recharge at that site. So it's essentially building leaching fields underneath fairways, and we're not doing, we're restoring it back to the way it looks today.
So, I'm sorry, so it's not, it's not any of that cost of restoring it back?
It's building the leaching fields and putting it back in the condition it is today.
The whole layouts. Okay. All right. So.
It does not include making any improvements to the Bass River Golf Course.
But the layouts would be new.
We're looking at the two costs. One is to just put the leaching fields in and restore it to the way it is today, and then we're looking at building the leaching fields and making the improvements around the option that the golf course committee had endorsed.
I guess I'm not, you know, I'm not sure how all those numbers all flush out, no pun on, no pun intended, but, the, you know, I think of it conceptually, from the golf course perspective, as a disaster. And if we had to insure against a disaster, an earthquake that destroyed the course, okay, we'd have to think about two components. We'd think about, how are we going to restore the course to its condition? How are we going to rebuild the course? So that's a property value insurance concept. And then we'd have a business interruption concept. Business interruption typically is an insurance policy you look at to cover your payroll costs, and things of that nature. Business interruption insurance doesn't just insure you for your profit losses, but it ensures you to keep your business going, to some extent. So I think it needs, that, there needs to be a look at those concepts of, you know, how are we going to retain our employees? You know, we can't, we can't say, well, tough, and lose all our employees. We have no business then. That's a whole nother scenario. So I think there probably is a way to look at this as kind of an insurance policy. And, you know, I don't think the taxpayers of the town of Yarmouth should have to foot the bill for this insurance policy. I guess that's, you know, I'm just trying to, you know, maybe there's a way to approach this in terms of thinking about it, that it is not just, oh, well, you know, here's $5.5 million bucks, and whatever that covers, it covers.
No, I think.
I think we have a structured approach.
Yeah, no, I wasn't trying to imply that $5.5 million is even the number. We're in the process of generating that number. What I tried to indicate was, the costs that you have seen to date include $5.5 million. It's not like there's nothing in there.
Okay. All right. But I think that we, in order to understand, I think our board needs to understand what is, how does that $5.5 million stack up against the property value loss and the business interruption loss that we would incur? I think those two concepts are important.
And I think that concept was endorsed, to your point.
Okay.
The other two communities, in the internal working group in any event, endorsed that concept of, yeah, that is a cost of doing this. And so, the direction was, over the next several months, and, you know, depending on what direction we're end up going here, that the golf directors would get together and start talking about the employment issue, and what could that look like if this were to come to fruition? They seemed to jump at the opportunity of, they have seasonal staffing challenges, just like we do, and to the extent they could alleviate that for even one season was an attractive option for them. So, you know, I think, you know, lots of work and details to be hammered out, but I think everybody left the meeting optimistic that it was an insurmountable challenge. Everybody recognizing that the other two communities have the exact same problem with golf courses slated as recharge sites in the future.
I think we need an independent look at that $5.5 million. You know, I recognize it's a good idea to have the golf course directors work together, but really, what they're doing is trying to mitigate a portion of the loss. They're trying to reduce the amount of the loss, which is fine, by having employees work elsewhere, but we need a starting point. What is the total amount of loss we would project?
I guess, one, just to clarify, from the town of Yarmouth's perspective, as Rich indicated earlier, whatever that cost is, whichever option you choose, you're going to, the option really is, do you want to do it in the next five years? Or do you want to do it in between year 12 and 17? But that site is part of the Yarmouth plan, whether it's part of DHY or part of Yarmouth. So, whatever cost you want to throw into the bucket, they're going to be there, under either of those options, and you're going to be part of either of those options at some point in time. So, if it's part of DHY, you're going to share part of that with the other communities. If it's part of just Yarmouth only, you're paying for the whole bucket.
My understanding, and that's fine, but there's got to be some structured way of thinking about what the, what the number is, otherwise, we'll keep going back and forth with, oh, I think it's 10 million, no, 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 it's 5 million, oh, we only have $5.5 million, well, too bad. You know, we got to get to some structured thought process of what is the value.
Well, one of my questions.
I think there was a consensus in the DHY committee that it's, I think Yarmouth needs to identify what its revenue loss is going to be. And generally, the feeling was that whatever it, that will be part of the DHY construction. So, if Yarmouth identifies a serious number on what their revenue loss is, that will be covered. So that, basically, it should hold the town harmless from a financial standpoint in losing the golf costs for, say, a year.
Rich was talking earlier about, you know, how do you define income? I find it hard to believe that they're going to look at just the gross income figures and say, okay, we agree to make that part of the loss for Yarmouth. And to compound that, we run our golf course pretty much on an enterprise system. I don't think Dennis does that, do they? Don't they run their golf course through the general fund? So there's going to have to be some kind of translation.
Yeah.
Because as Dave said, that's going to set a precedent, and whatever they do for Yarmouth's, going to set a precedent for the other towns, if they have losses of income. And yet, we have two different accounting systems.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, this was one of the things that I wanted to have a robust discussion on at the subcommittee meeting, and these were very much the questions that were put up. I had made it very clear to the other selectmen participating in the discussion, that this, the golf course was going to be an area of concern, and would probably come up in our three-town committee, you know, meeting. I wanted to get a sense from the other, particularly the other selectmen there, to what extent they would be committed to making the town of Yarmouth whole, in terms of the impacts of golf. And I will admit, there was very broad support for doing that. I was a little bit surprised with some of the enthusiasm for it, quite frankly. I went into it skeptically, and somewhat concerned, like you, but I was pleasantly surprised at the degree to which the selectmen in the other towns embraced the idea of making the town whole. One selectman, I won't mention any names, thought that this could actually turn out to be potentially beneficial, particularly since the town does have to make investments in Bass River at some point, that this may be an opportunity to put that golf course on a different course, a different status. And so, he was characterizing, and it's sort of making lemonade out of a lemon, so to speak. But I did not see any resistance, and again, it was at a general level, but I saw no resistance whatsoever to making the town of Yarmouth whole as a result of the work that will be necessary in terms of doing this project. And I would have anticipated some caution, some concern, let's see the numbers, but I think folks there participating in this discussion were very strongly in support of, or at least, they were certainly made aware of our concerns, that there might be some resistance in terms of making the town whole, and I wanted it known to them that that would be an issue in Yarmouth, most likely. I couldn't speak on behalf of the board, but I just wanted to gauge for, let them know that it would clearly be a concern, just given our own finances and the challenges that we're having right now in terms of helping golf sort of get back into operating in the black. So, it was flagged, it was discussed. I suggested that they be prepared to have an additional discussion when the three towns get together, and hopefully, they will provide the same kind of assurances to the rest of the board that they provided to me and the rest of our team at the meeting.
I guess I would add to that, is that, you know, in some of the discussions I've had individually with some of those participants, would be, you know, we're all faced with, you know, not exactly, but plus or minus, depending on which community you are, and how you're realizing the savings, around a 30% savings following a DHY option, whether that's capital, or operating, or a mix of the two. On an annual basis, it's about 30%, plus or minus, for any one of the three communities. Yarmouth, if the number is 5.5 million, that's 5.5 million and just about $130 million total project cost. It's a relatively small element of that. So if there's an increase to that element of it, it doesn't, the impact of the savings of the 30% on $130 million is still much, dwarfs the incremental cost on a small, relatively small element of the project.
I'm having a hard time wrapping my mind around a whole new design, and how that cost would even be part of this plan. Why that would even, why we even discuss that? I mean, how, I don't think that, I mean, obviously, that would be something that Yarmouth would have to bear the burden on ourselves. I can't imagine Dennis asking us to redesign and put a different type of golf course there down the road. So, I mean, if the 5.5 is putting it back the way it is now, I would assume anything over that, or whatever the additional cost would be to redesign it, would be on us.
The 5.5 is nothing more than a number that's been carried to date.
No, I'm not.
We're in the process of generating what the cost is to build those fields and put the course back, and option two, to build the fields and see what the delta is to give you the course, new course routing, and what that might look like, so that you will know that delta. And yes, the discussions have been, Yarmouth would pay that increase.
And you could estimate that out fairly accurately, correct? I mean, you look at the new improvements, and let's say they come to $7 million, and you measure that against the 5.5 million to restore it to its present condition, the extra million and a half dollars goes to Yarmouth.
Yeah.
You know, again, it's an economy of scale thing, that you would benefit by having major construction to put those leaching fields in, you know, versus building a new golf course. It's not a heavily treed site, so, you know, you get a lot of earth moving and stuff. You're going to gain cost advantage by doing it all at once, and doing the rerouting. And we can, we've been talking to the architect to try to keep as much fill on-site, so you're not paying for trucking that off, or impacting the neighborhoods with trucking routes, and all those things. So. So that's why I wanna make sure, we weren't gonna put a number out tonight. It's in process. But again, I think it's not really a decision, in my mind, of whether you join DHY or not. It's an opportunity for you, but I'm not sure it's a decision whether you join DHY.
No, I agree. I just, I don't, I didn't want the perception out there that we were trying to get a new designed golf course off of, you know, Dennis paying for it and then 10 years down the road when they do theirs, that's reciprocated. I don't think that that's what our intention is. But out of this DHY option of the 126 million, how much of that is our own, not divided, not for the actual plant and the DHY agreement? Because there's a piece of this that is DHY and there's a number that is Yarmouth only out of this 126.
So I can get you that detail. It is in this packet if you really want the detail. I'll take a moment and try to find it for you. But to your point, for simplicity's sake, so we can discuss this, there really are two parts to this, right? It's the DHY piece, which is just the plant and the recharge. And it's the Yarmouth collection system piece aggregated together to a total of that 126. But they're really two separate projects. It would be approached separately. And the wastewater financing plan in one of the appendices, I think it's appendix two, there are some spreadsheets and, like I said, I'll go and find it for you so you don't need to search high and low. But there are some charts in there in appendix two showing the costs by phase by town. I guess one, maybe not necessarily close it out, but one final point I would like to add about the golf course discussion. One of the reasons I brought it up here, other than I know it was of interest, but we did specifically speak with our peer review team to discuss this issue and they'll be considering it. And when they make their presentation, hopefully, we'll be able to speak to it as well. And we can try to incorporate any new information we get in working with the golf course architect in that regard as well.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that this board have a policy that allows for the new short-term rental tax as projected here to be earmarked for wastewater.
Do you want a second?
I'll second that for discussion. What might be helpful, Rich, is to clarify, when we talk about the short-term rental money and the monies that are being used for this, are we talking about 100%? What's the percentage of short-term rental money that you would see earmarked for this?
I suppose in your policy, you could indicate that. But I would submit to you, you know, upcoming on your agenda, maybe even soon as tomorrow, perhaps the next meeting, will be a discussion of articles, and one of those articles is wastewater funding. And that article includes $500,000 funded by the short-term rental tax, estimated short-term rental tax, to go towards the wastewater reserve. And the reason that it would be this way in this first year, you could do something this first year and maybe something differently in a future year, is because this first year has a level of uncertainty. We don't have any experience with it, I mean, we don't have the full experience. And so the consideration was working with town council and department of revenue is making that article perhaps contingent upon the actual receipt. So in other words, appropriate 500,000 because we think we ought to be able to achieve that. But in the event that the bottom falls out from it and you don't get 500,000, you're only beholden to putting in the reserve what you actually receive.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question, this is open for discussion. The, what is it, 695, is that the number, 695,000? I support the concept, but I'm not sure who should be voting on this. I'm not sure that it's a select board policy. I think it's a town meeting policy.
It's a policy, just like our policy to take the funds from the override and earmark that towards, it's towards roads. It's no different than that. It's, I believe it's very much our policy.
I think we overrides when we ask the taxpayers for them.
I'm talking about the two and a half every year that goes on that. We have made a policy to earmark those additional funds every year to go towards the roads to be consistent with the town vote. It's a policy decision. Doesn't mean it's not gonna be backed up by a vote and appropriation. But at some point in time, I think this board needs to make some step towards committing to do something.
Well, if I can just add, this discussion, actually, we talked about this very same topic a while back.
Yes.
And I raised it. The topic has literally come to a number of towns already. Town boards of selectmen, the town of Barnstable, the town council, they actually had a discussion and a resolution of this topic already. The town of Barnstable, for example, was asked to dedicate those dollars to a very broad array of purposes, affordable housing, tourism promotion, and wastewater. And the council more or less decided to focus not on any of the other unrelated wastewater items, but to exclusively use the added short-term rental dollars towards wastewater. They made it very clear that that's where they wanted to target it. That's the, sort of the assumption that went along with the actual passage of the short-term rental tax legislation. So they, as a board, made a policy to do that. The town of Mashpee did something different. They adopted the proposal being endorsed by the Chamber of Commerce, which was to use it for a variety of purposes. I think it's a healthy move for us. We would not, we'd actually be sort of in line with a number of other communities that are making the commitment to dedicate their short-term revenue dollars to dealing with the wastewater problem. And I think, I think it's important to make, I agree like Tracy, I think it's important to make that. The question is whether or not it should be a discussion about all five. My only hesitation is having Eric involved in the conversation because I'm sure he'd have something to say and add to the conversation. But I personally like the idea, I support the idea. I embrace it wholeheartedly. I think that's the way the legislation was crafted and created, and I think we owe it to keep it specifically for that purpose.
In practice, how that would happen is if you had a policy, for sake of argument, 100% of the short-term rentals go to wastewater. After a period of time, you have an experience, an estimate of what that's actually going to be. And if it's 570,000 or if it's 625,000, well, as we go through the budget process, we just make sure those monies are dedicated to either debt service or to wastewater reserve. It's not unlike a lot of things that we do. And it is a policy. And so you get to town meeting floor and we read a motion with a list of appropriations and the funding sources of those appropriations. It's subject to amendment on the floor.
One of the things that's helpful in this is that when the legislation first got passed, they said that they were gonna, we wouldn't be able to differentiate between the money that would go in one bucket. And now we've gotten further clarification that we will know the difference between the expanded dollars and the dollars that we have already collected. So we will know what the new money is.
Are we sure that we have the right to do that legally?
Oh, I'm convinced we do.
Without town meeting approval?
Think about it this way, Norm, I mean, town meeting can, as a governing body, they can, they can, they can, there can be a motion to do something different. But these dollars are gonna fall through to general revenues. They'll be part of the general fund. They'll end up showing up. If we don't allocate those for a particular purpose, they'll show up in our free cash numbers unless we allocate them to some other.
Except that we've actually already, you know, your policy or lack of notwithstanding today, we've already effectively done that. And when we talk about our wastewater funding article at the upcoming town meeting, this is an element of paying for that. So without your sage wisdom in advance, we've already essentially done that.
Well, this is gonna, the wastewater fund is essentially an enterprise fund?
Well, there's a variety of different articles that are going to address making a combined water and wastewater. I think the best or easiest way to look at this is, as selectman Forrest had indicated, these revenues come in, they essentially are part of free cash. And you're gonna need to reappropriate them somewhere or to appropriate them somewhere to the reserve fund, as Rich is talking about. You're gonna need town meeting to do that, like we do with anything with free cash. And I think preemptively, what we did to help kickstart this conversation was we estimated how much we're going to come in and put that in front of you for consideration for this upcoming town meeting. But certainly, when you, when we go to build the budget every year, and I've been kind of a believer or a proponent of, let's wait and see what all of this comes out because some of the information we got tonight is that maybe we're not seeing only but 40% of the revenue from this. But with every budget cycle and you give us the direction on the policy, you can instruct us or tell us to reserve a certain amount based on last year's actuals. So this should get better for another budget cycle. And how you wanna do that, you might find out we get $750,000, say. And we don't necessarily maybe need all that. And during the budget policy discussion, you can tell us how you'd like us to plan for that. So I believe that there's a wide degree of flexibility associated with this, particularly in this early stage when we don't know exactly what we're gonna get. But ultimately, town meeting will have to make a vote to appropriate.
It's much akin to your OPEB policy that you set, Norm, you remember?
No, as long as there's a vote at town meeting.
Oh, absolutely.
That's what I was asking, is a vote at town meeting.
This town meeting would be a separate standalone article. And then I would contemplate in future town meetings, once it's been discussed and voted as an article at town meeting, it would be incorporated into the wastewater budget going forward.
Right, yeah. It's not, I understand the concept, but I was asking the question about, well, does town meeting actually approve the appropriation?
Yes.
For those funds? And as long as the answer is yes, I'm all in favor of assigning that.
I do think it's very similar to what you did with OPEB. We made the policy that we were gonna fund it currently, but it still goes to town meeting and gets appropriated. But that's your, that's our budget policy.
And I was hoping that we could, when the budget policy was actually before the board, we could have adopted it as a matter of policy when that was presented to us, but we decided.
So that is not going to be one of our articles?
Yes, it will still be.
In this upcoming town meeting?
What, OPEB?
No.
No, dedication of the short-term rental monies to wastewater.
It's under consideration, it will be, yes.
Okay, okay.
So I guess the only other question is, Mark's, the issue Mark raised, do you wanna vote this in Eric's absence, so you wanna wait for Eric?
I mean, my preference would be, it's a good board policy discussion. It's gonna come up, what, at our next meeting or the?
Tomorrow.
Very, so it makes sense for us to just table this for tonight and talk about it tomorrow.
It's a good idea.
Well, he can vote tomorrow.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Is that okay, Tracy?
We have time, you know, so even if it doesn't get resolved tomorrow, we definitely have time between now and March.
He can vote not to support the article. I mean, we still have an article. It's just, I'd like to move forward on one item, something.
I'm not too worried about that, honestly. I just think it's a question of courtesy to the other member of the board.
Speaking of courtesy to the other member of the board, I don't know if Rich or anybody has seen Eric's questions.
Can I have him? I'll, well, he said he'd like to see a timetable for significant events. I think you've covered that, Dave. He said, I don't know if we've ever developed a critical path chart for all of this, but if not, it would be helpful to me.
Yes, that's his.
Yeah, I think the questions he was trying to get to and what the future actions are are all laid out on that chart, but be happy if he has any follow-up ones to answer them.
Then he asked if, in your email, Rich, at 24, and he mentions a specific 3.0 Roman, small Roman number two, regarding a $100,000 residential exemption. If memory serves me, this was crafted specifically for the mythical average $300,000 house and represents a 33% reduction. Why are we not extending that to all properties regardless of value? And I think you answered that, we are.
$100,000 applies to each property equally.
Okay, so that's checked. And then he asks, does this discussion, again, referring to your email with Dennis and Harwich, does it involve reimbursing Yarmouth for lost golf revenues during construction? I think we've talked about that. But the second follow-up question to that is, what if they balk? And I guess, Dave, your answer to that would be, the way they deal with Yarmouth on the Bass River recharge area is going to chart the course for how the partnership deals with them when it, when the same kind of issues come to visit them, I guess is the answer.
Yeah, I mean, there's an incentive for all of them to work together to solve this, not to go the other way.
Right.
And they need a, and the DHY commissioners would need our site. There's incentive to.
Right.
As I said, you're gonna have similar issues at the Dennis DPW site.
Right.
So.
So I guess we don't take the water after it's treated. Let them drown in it, I guess. Then he asked, Rich, what if we don't receive the 0% financing? And I guess the answer to that is, as we discussed before, if you get a 1% loan, you can add $1 million annually to debt service. And if it's a 2% loan, you would add $2 million per year to the debt service.
Right, and that's why time really, time is now to make a decision and not to be too dire on the issue. But we're a little bit ahead of the game right now compared to other communities on Cape Cod. And you'll hear on the 27th from the SRF folks about the competitiveness and how much money they have available to provide a 0% loan. And you're competing with other applications. So if you're in the same pool at the same time, that what, you know, that makes that reality, that makes the opportunity to get that 0% a little bit less. And also, they will be speaking to the value of participating in a regional approach as providing additional consideration to a 0% or a subsidy.
And his last question, and I think we're probably a little bit, it's a little bit ahead of where we are so far. Will there be a school funding article on the ATM warrant? And if so, how could this impact the likelihood of wastewater article success? In my opinion, if there's gonna be a school article on the warrant and if Harwich, Harwich's issues are slowing down the process, I'd prefer not to see the two at ATM together.
So right now, there is no school article for town meeting. There is a potential of a ballot for an exclusion for the school.
It's already been voted.
But it's been voted at town meeting.
No, it's been voted by the board. So there will be an article, excuse me, there will be a debt exclusion vote at spring election.
Right, but we're not talking about a override.
I think he's talking about, I think he's talking about an operational override.
Override.
Yeah, so we don't know right now, there's.
But if we have articles that go on a ballot for this, they will not be funding. They're not, we're not asking to raise taxes, other than the school ballot question.
Right now, there's no DHY ballot question.
Right.
And Harwich continues to say they are all in.
That's the latest? That's the, really? It's good. While on the subject of 0% financing, Mr. Chairman, can I just ask if our collection system is potentially eligible for 0%? So if we're doing this, if we're not on the go at a loan approach, but in it together with the other two towns? So we could, we could package in our collection system as part of the 0% financing? Is that correct?
Yeah, it would be a separate loan application because it'd be the town of Yarmouth. But to give an example, Harwich got 0% interest loan for their super system that's being built now because they're going to a CHATM and they consider. being built now, because they're going to Chatham, and they consider it a regional solution. So they gained the additional fifty points for that reason.
Got it. Thank you.
But it all depends on how much money is left in the bucket, as Rich indicated. It's competitive.
No, I just think as a board, it's helpful to know that as we talk about zero percent financing, we're talking about the entire phase one.
Do you have the same view on that, Rich, that if Yarmouth applies for financing for the in-town collection system, that it would be viewed the same way as the DHY piece?
Well, they'd be two separate, I agree, it'd be two separate applications, but considered under a regional approach.
And you think that one would be as eligible for, you know, some kind of reduced financing?
They both would be.
Equally?
Yeah, well, I don't know if I could say that, but you'll have the person to ask on February twenty-seventh. She'll be in attendance and can tell you.
Okay.
Can I ask one question about your projections? Is there any, or do you foresee, I know this is going down our main commercial thoroughfare, the first phase, do you foresee any business interruption, financial impacts to this at all? And has that been factored in?
We haven't factored in any cost to your program for that beyond, you know, it includes police details and detours and those things. But there will be interim impacts. We'll try to do everything we can to minimize it, working with the contractor and their schedules, and they have to have the roads back open at night. You know, there's some short-term detouring going on right now in East Harwich. You know, we've all read the newspapers previous years in Chatham, Orleans. You know, we do whatever we can to try to minimize that, but we have not carried any additional cost for impacts to those businesses at this time.
Has the other towns that you've seen go through this had to bear that cost?
Not that I'm aware of. They have sometimes increased their outreach budgets to try to do more, just to help make sure that people coming into town are aware, whether it's websites, local newspaper notices, signage boards, more over and above what we would normally do, which we carry some level. But I have not seen any specific outreach to a business.
And in terms of this construction schedule that you've projected here, do we know how many or what else is out there on the Cape in this same timeline that could affect our costs? Meaning if there's, you know, four or five other big projects at the same time, potentially, that could really impact our number?
Well, actually, we had the discussion at the third-party peer review workshop. Something that we'll work on is trying to figure out, you know, schedules and what would, just for the three towns here, if they move forward. Because Harwich may delay a year, be a year behind, because they're already in construction. We have a general sense what's happening in some other communities, but it all depends on who moves forward, when they move forward, at what rate. So we're going to try and do our best, but we're not going to know everything.
One of the other considerations that was mentioned, too, was that if you already have contractors down here mobilized for something, the chances of you getting a better bid in a future project is a little bit better. No guarantee like anything else. And the answer to your previous question, too, about the business interruption, is that Harwich right now is running longer days of construction to try and get through some key areas faster. So I would imagine when we get to our project, we can tailor that to where we are in a given area.
What's the deepest projection for phase one? Do you know how deep?
Deepest excavation?
Yeah.
You know we're near the deep one that's going on in Harwich right now. I don't recall what it would be, but my guess is they're all probably under twenty feet, less than twenty feet, versus, you know, we're at twenty-six, twenty-seven feet in a couple places in Harwich, so.
Thank you.
To that point, Kurt mentioned, and Dave just alluded to, one of the final points I had to make under the cost section here was, with our peer review workshop, we specifically brought up and asked them to consider the circumstances surrounding bids in Harwich. And I just want to make sure we get that on the table. As you are aware, there was, their Harwich contract one was a bit higher than what they had estimated in their planning process. And I forwarded to you a memo that we received from CDM on some of the explanations of that. So you have that. But our peer review group is going to be looking at that. But I'd also note that contract two came in less than the estimate. Not, you know, proportional, of course, but, but what that engendered was a really good discussion with Westonham-Samson and CDM and the public works directors in the room at the time, about how important the bid environment is. And that one of the factors influencing the, you know, one of the, several factors influencing those bids between contract one and contract two had to do with the availability of the workforce and companies that have mobilized to do work on the Cape. And so, again, being an early adopter or implementer of a program, might facilitate a more attractive bid environment. And so that was an interesting discussion. I'll let them brief you on that when they brief you on the twenty-seventh. But I found it a pretty interesting discussion. That being said, you might recall back in, I believe, September or late August perhaps, we did an update to this board on the costs. And at the time, I think we were at about $112 million. And now we have in front of you the latest cost estimates of one hundred and twenty-six, one hundred and twenty-seven. And a big part of that increase was as a result of that bid environment in Harwich and other projects across the Cape, building in a contingency for additional bid circumstances. And so I'll let Dave, he's the one that's accumulated these costs, but as I understand it, there was a ten percent on certain costs added to our cost estimates to protect against that bid inflation.
Yeah, we had actually prepared a cost memo that I believe the board has dated October third, that went through how all your costs have been generated, what we have done over the last year to update them and all. So I forget if that was in your most recent packet, but I know it was sent to you earlier. Be happy to answer any questions on that. But, you know, there were things like, and you saw this, when we bid your pickleball court project, the paving costs on the Cape have significantly gone up. Not so high off Cape, but on Cape, because there's only one or two facilities supplying all that asphalt. They have significantly gone up. So that was one of the reasons it went up in Harwich. But there's, not just seeing it there, they're seeing it across the Cape, so, you know.
All right. Can we have a quick overview of the DY option versus the town of Yarmouth option? Who's got the house?
Well, I don't think, it's already, almost everything on my list has already been discussed. So basically, it's the savings per year in capital and operation and finances. So we've gone over the zero percent, the two percent, and the savings of each project alone, or as a region. Again, some of the recharge benefits, even with the DHY, is we're sending more waste over than we're receiving back in effluent right in the design right now. So there's a benefit there, where we would have to take Buck Island Road and Bass River Golf Course to handle our effluent if we did it on our own. So there's some savings right there. And again, it leaves Buck Island Road available for other things. If we ever do make a deal with Barnstable for effluent, or if we need to land for something else, it's there. So that, there's a big help by itself. We've talked about the renovation of the golf course. We get help doing something we need to do anyways. Not having to host a treatment plant, we don't have to worry about all this much trucking across our roads. You know, again, it's been mentioned about chemicals traveling and sludge disposal and things like that. And I guess the question, you know, is this the preferred governance model? And I think that was talked about a little bit, that you're going to have a DHY commission, but at the local level, the selectmen right now, the sewer commissioners. So you keep a lot of control that way. And again, you'd be working with Jeff Colby and staff at DPW, so I think you keep that pretty close on that. And I think with all the amendments we've made to the agreement through different people's requests, we've answered a lot of concerns about, you know, is it fair, is everybody well represented? So I don't know if there's any more. I think we've answered through the past meetings many questions about the agreement, unless there's anything else.
I think also, Rich, correct me if I'm not wrong, operationally speaking, the benefit to the town is that we save about a million dollars a year by being in DHY versus if we had to run our own plant. And one of the other topics that came up, interestingly enough, at the peer review, was the optic of having five wastewater treatment plants in a very small linear geographic model. And if we were to do that, how much difficult it would be to staff those plants based on very specific skill sets that are hard to come by today. So by having one plant serve three towns, and then one in Chatham and one in Barnstable, the best opportunity to ensure that you have a good workforce, and again, these are very specific licenses these operators have, the likelihood that we could better staff a plant is better as a group of three than it would be as each one of us doing our own.
And we could contract out operations, too, which saves a lot of issues with benefits and retirements and things like that. Chances are, it would probably be an outside outfit that would actually run the physical plants, pump stations, things like that, or do the maintenance.
The RAC does have a recommendation supporting the participation in DHY. It's included in your packet at page seventy-two. Is there a memo? And then there's a flyer on the next page describing some of the benefits. I'd just submit, just to, you know, drive this point home, on the summary funding plan, it indicates about a $5 million capital savings in participating in DHY, which on this magnitude of project isn't really of huge significance. It's almost equal. But I just keep reminding that if participation in a regional effort is the one thing that guarantees you that zero percent financing versus a two percent financing, that's a $40 million savings, which is very significant. It's the difference between meeting your affordability goals and not increasing the tax rate and not doing that. If we can get that zero percent finance, we have a plan, we know we got to work the plan and achieve those targets that we set in the funding plan. But if we can do that, then we can achieve that goal of no tax rate impact. And if we get a one or a two percent interest, a one percent, maybe we could work it out somehow. But two percent becomes very challenging. And so the benefit of a regional approach, if anything, that, if that can solidify that opportunity, that's significant. And Dan, to your point, this is out in the hallway. Can't hear me if I'm not on the microphone, but for the audience and for the Suckman, this is the figure that Dan was talking about with the top shows. And I don't know, what is it, Dave, perhaps, fifteen mile span? What's proposed is five different treatment plants in a fifteen mile span. And this goes to the common sense approach of what I think the RAC has been considering as I'm talking about this, versus this approach where you've got three plants in the same area. We are not a unique area. Lots of treatment plants and collection systems have built in more difficult areas, more dense areas. So I think there are some challenges and details to be worked out, but I think we've got the framework. And because of that, I think, you know, and not to speak for the board, and they can hear to speak for themselves, but like I said, they did vote to support participation.
Anybody else on that, on the topic? Okay, the next topic was if there, it's just a placeholder, if there's any other financial considerations we should be aware of, other than what was in the previous agenda items, or if there's any input from any other group that might be impacted based on the RAC proposal. Okay, seeing none, we'll go up to update status of Route 28 work.
Yes, thank you. Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. I'll cover this briefly. Many of these things that I wanted to talk about were already mentioned very briefly tonight. Coordination of construction contracts, very important to savings. And the bottom line is, we're committed to savings on construction. Rich had mentioned an opportunity for savings on design with some grants and things of that nature. So we'll certainly look to do that as well. As has been previously mentioned, when we talk about construction, is that if you're working primarily in Route 28, which is a Mass DOT roadway, they have a five-year moratorium. And that is, if they do a project, and they've paved a road, curb to curb, reconstructed sidewalks, put in new traffic signals, as is being contemplated over at the Four Corners along Route 28, we can't dig up that roadway for five years. So that's a very important concept to keep in mind. Just the fact of delaying any of these projects, any of these constructions for five years adds significant dollars. So we're looking to avoid that. And what's been contemplated here, and is evidenced by this graphic that's on the screen here, we also have some full-size poster boards as well available that we've shown at all of our outreach seminars, is that we are coordinating those efforts. And it's an important overall cost savings. There's several millions of dollars to be saved in coordinating these projects ahead of time. One of the concepts that we're working with Mass DOT and their designers on both the Bass River Bridge along Route 28, as well as the Four Corners intersection I just mentioned of Route 28, North Main Street and Old Main Street, is to put the pipes in the ground at the same time the project is happening, by the same contractor. That's very important, because it will minimize disruption to the business community. That came up earlier tonight. It will also save money where we will only be responsible, the town of Yarmouth will only be responsible for the cost of installing that sewer pipe, not the road restoration and not the other costs associated with that particular project. Those are huge savings. So those are two projects that's happening on. And just a brief update, because that's what this item is entitled, the Bass River Bridge project is being designed right now by HDR, and the construction is expected to be in 2021. So these are very timely conversations, because these are very short, in very short order, heading towards construction. As well as that Four Corners intersection of Route 28, North Main Street and Old Main Street, that's currently being designed by Niche Engineering with construction scheduled for 2022. Two different designs, but there is discussion about marrying those projects together. Again, that will minimize impact to the public if they're being done at the same time versus one project the next year, another project being done. So that's what's being discussed on those. And we are in the process of coordinating with them with what the sewer design will look like as part of those projects, so that those can happen at the same time, as I mentioned before. And the third project, which is highlighted, and it's the western side of Yarmouth, from the Parker River Bridge to the Barnstable Town Line, that's a reconstruction of Route 28. There's some deficient sidewalks in that area. Certainly, Mass DOT understands the need for general improvements of that roadway. That is scheduled. There's no active designer awarded at this time, but a road safety audit was completed last year, and town staff was involved in that discussion. That's a very early step in the whole design process. But that construction is scheduled for 2023. And so as I mentioned before, if we can't put the pipes in the ground as part of a project, we certainly want to do it in advance of the project. And that may be the case for that particular stretch of Route 28. So we're coordinating with Mass DOT to make sure that can happen in a timely fashion. They've also asked for, particularly on the more recent projects, or the projects that are going to happen sooner, with the Bass River Bridge and the Four Corners intersection, they've asked for a cost commitment letter from the town of Yarmouth, saying, we will commit to this project. They don't want to go through the whole process and find out we're not going to pay for those pipes in the ground. So they've asked us for a cost commitment letter on those, particularly those two projects, that we're committed to partnering with them for the pipe installation. So that's a consideration that we'll talk about a little bit more in a moment, and might be a consideration for an article at town meeting as well. We've also requested a meeting with Mass DOT to further these discussions with more detailed timelines. There's also been some discussions with Representative Whalen about a special committee being set up to help coordinate these. So we're looking to push that along as well, further those discussions. So I'm hopeful that that will help even further the coordination and help us save on this project. And the last item with regards to cost savings that I want to mention is that this is also not just focused on Route 28. It certainly is for this first phase, which is Phase One of our plan. But as a town, as a public works entity, we're looking at all of the phases relative to our road maintenance funds. So as the board is well aware, we have approximately $2 million of money that's invested in our road maintenance, mostly chip ceiling, but some road surface, some road reconstruction, sidewalk projects, things of that nature. And all of that needs to be coordinated as well, so that we're putting the pipes in the ground and then following that up with that road maintenance activity. That will save the project as well in not doing things twice, having to redo a roadway and then look to dig it up. So similar to that five-year moratorium that MassDOT has, we can do that and manage that internally with town roads and the private roads that are going to be sewered as well to make sure that we're also dealing with the construction in an appropriate timeframe. So in summary, if we continue with that project coordination, we'll be in line to save several millions of dollars on the project costs, so that is helpful. I want to transition to the next item, which is the potential funding needs. And this will help introduce what I mentioned before with relative to Article 20, and that's approximately estimated $5 million at this time. But there's collection system design that is the town responsibility along that first phase, that primarily Route 28 section, and that's estimated to be $3.5 million. We do have a CDM Smith memo in that regard that details a breakdown of what that looks like, but that's an approximate cost. There's also a cost that's recommended relative to project management that would be approximately a couple hundred thousand dollars as well. And then, as I mentioned, with the project coordination, pipe installation costs for the Bass River Bridge, as well as that Four Corners intersection, is estimated to be just a little over $1 million. And this would be, if this was an article at town meeting, would just be an authorization. Therefore, we could sign a commitment letter. It wouldn't be pipes that go in the ground for several years in the future, but we would be able to be able to move forward in partnering with MassDOT on that project. With that said, that's an Article 20, which we can talk about the articles a little bit more in depth in a moment, but that's approximately $5 million, and that's how that roughly breaks out. So if the Board of Selectment is supportive of that particular approach for that article, we'll continue to refine those numbers and get exact numbers associated with that, but that's an estimate of what that article impact would be. And if there are any questions generally about the status of Route 28 work and update, I'll certainly have, hand off to Rich to talk more detail about those town meeting articles.
Thank you. Any questions? Tracy has a question.
You said $3.5 million in design.
Correct.
So that's separate from the figure that we got for our program? This is a separate number. It's not inclusive of the 126 million?
It's built within.
It's built in.
So it's in there?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that all those numbers that you gave were within that.
Got a question?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
The one number that's being talked about, just to revisit that, is for all of Phase One, both collection as well as treatment.
So the $3.5 million in designs, not just to put the pipes in the ground for those projects, I would hope. I know you're good, Dave, but that's a lot of money. The $3.5 million, is the completion of the design for Phase One complete, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to, Tracy put my question out there about that $3.5 million, is Phase One collection system complete? Is that it? That's what we heard, right?
Yes, and that includes all the survey that's required and all the borings that have to go in every 300 feet per SRF requirements and all those things, not just engineering, it's permitting, all the ancillaries that go with it and everything.
Did you say, did someone say we had a memo on this?
We do have a detailed breakdown.
Does the Select Board have a memo on this?
I don't know if it's been distributed to you.
I haven't seen anything.
We certainly can send it to you.
Okay, that would be great. The other question I have relates to just the route. Most of the culverts that MassDOT has constructed along Route 28 are generally undersized, and some of them are clogged in varying degrees. I'm assuming, and I'm just curious if you could answer this question, Jeff, are we going to take a look at these culverts in the design of this work? Or is there some way our Conservation Department and some of our other town staff can participate so that we can at least mitigate some of these wetlands issues and problems along?
We're going to take a look at some of the elements. I don't know if it's going to completely address what you're speaking to, but certainly as it relates to other aspects other than just sewer, we know that we need to replace the water main along most of Route 28 as well. That's going to be dealt with at the same time. As far as the culverts, we can take a look at that. I know that we need to work closely with MassDOT because it's their roadway, and all of this will be a permit project.
Right.
We get a permit through them to do this work, so we have to see what they're willing and willing to have us do.
Got it. But as long as town staff can take a look at those culverts during the design review process, because I think in a number of occasions, some of those culverts are significantly undersized, and it's worth looking at them or at least having them get some attention during the design process.
Certainly, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, that'd be great. I just wanted to flag that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Discussion of proposed eight annual town meeting articles.
The article list that you, I believe you voted at the last meeting, there are several placeholder articles. And I'm hesitant to assign the numbers to them at this point, but I'll speak to what they are and the order in which they're laid out on that list. The first one is kind of to set the stage for accumulating the funds needed to pay for this project, and that's the adoption of a Water Resource Enterprise Fund. And so what that would do would be a vote all within one article to adopt an enterprise fund to consolidate our septic plant, our water operation, and our stormwater operation, as well as a future wastewater sewer operation into one enterprise fund. And at the same time, vote to discontinue the current enterprise fund for the septic and the water funds. And so as you might recall, our first money articles at town meeting, we've got our operating budget for the general fund, we've got the water budget, we've got the septic budget. We're going to continue to do those for this year. And then later down in town meeting, you've got this article to adopt a wastewater, Water Resource Enterprise Fund, which effectively would consolidate those budgets that we had voted earlier into one fund. And then in the future, what we end up with is instead of a separate septic and water article for the budget, those budgets, we'd have them in one budget. They would be separately tracked and reported to you within that one fund.
Is that an enterprise?
It would be an enterprise fund, yeah. I don't know if it's a specific requirement, but in talking to some other communities, it sounds like, at least in, that's become a requirement of SRF, to have that set up as an enterprise fund. And so that sets the stage. Any of the articles that we talk about as far as, there is a prior article, it's part of the budget, so it's not considered necessarily wastewater, but we do have a prior article prior to this to set up various funds in a wastewater reserve, pulling about $1.6 million. And I believe that's on your agenda for tomorrow night, so we'll talk about it tomorrow night of how that looks. But that money, once voted, if voted, would go into this enterprise fund as a reserve. I'm sorry, that's the next article, wastewater reserve is $1.6 million. And so that breakdown of that $1.6 million is $500,000 of short-term rentals is our estimate for the upcoming year. $125,000 to reallocate the anticipated energy savings from solar PV projects into this wastewater reserve. $500,000, which is ahead of schedule in our plan from the septic plant. We do have a couple other challenges, though, that we have to address with regard to sledge disposal, so we might have to revisit that amount. And also up for discussion is $500,000 from free cash that would be added into the wastewater reserve. So those are all, will be presented to you for your discussion and submission to town meeting as you see fit. That's the second article in the slew, in the slate of wastewater articles. The third article is the adoption of a water investment and infrastructure fund. This is the fund where we add a surcharge. It does go onto the property tax bill. And at 0.78%, pending our prior discussions, that 0.78% equates to exactly the $500,000 we're contemplating saving by doing a CPA $100,000 residential exemption, which is the next article. And so adopting a wastewater infrastructure fund is Article One, and this board will have to, or town meeting, or someone will have to come up with the percent. But 0.78% is the equivalent of 500,000. Alternatively, I've heard some members talk about, we should just do 1%, which in, when we originally talked to you about this, generated about $630,000, so that's about $130,000. It's not quite equivalent to the 500. And of course, you've got the RAC's recommendation of the 1.5, which my cash flow statements that we talked about earlier indicate you wouldn't necessarily need to do until six years out. So that's adoption of the WIF. The next article would be the CPA surcharge. Right now, as a placeholder, it's as a reduction or as your exemption. Seems like lately we've been talking about the exemption, the 500,000 savings by doing the residential exemption. Both of those articles are town meeting articles, and both of those articles require a ballot vote to be ratified by the citizens. So just to ask the obvious, point out the obvious question that you would get, the answer is yes. You could vote them both favorably at town meeting and lose them both, or lose one of them and not the other one at the ballot box. And you'd be stuck with the result that that generates. The next article on the slate of wastewater articles has to do with participating in DHY. This would be the same article, the same wording at each town meeting in Harwich, Dennis, and Yarmouth. We need to be voting on the same thing, and we need to be voting on the same agreement. And as Dave laid out in his timeline, if each town were to do that at town meeting, DHY would be effective, and we'd go about the process of appointing commissioners and making an effective, an effective operation going forward. And then finally, regardless of what happens with DHY, we have our own design work to do on the collection system. And Jeff Colby just spoke to you about that. And so right now, I would contemplate an article that would likely be a bond authorization for the $5 million, or whatever the number ends up being. And it would be a town meeting article and likely not a ballot question, because you've established this wastewater enterprise fund, and if you were to approve the, what's in front of you tomorrow as far as the article, you would already have accumulated $1.6 million towards that cause. And if you adopt the wastewater infrastructure fund, you'll be adding $500,000 a year for each of the next several years to that fund as well. And so there's no need to vote it on the ballot as a dead exclusion. And I think that's it.
Questions, Tracy?
I don't have any questions. I just want to just publicly state how lucky we are to have Rich and a committee like this. I think about where we were, and I think about where we are now, and I'm very comfortable supporting in theory what you've laid out. And it took us, it took me, I know, a long way and a long time to get there, and it just, it goes to the dedication, hard work of everybody who was involved, so I thank you for that, Rich.
So Rich, we're going to be talking about this tomorrow evening?
Yeah, I think I'm on the slate to do my budget presentation for the department. And at the same time, I'll be addressing any articles that relate to me as well, so.
I guess two requests. One is the, we've been talking about the equivalency of the 0.78 pre-fund and the $100,000 exemption. Can we run that out by house valuation, say 300, 400, 500, 600, 700? I'd like to see what the impact is based upon house values. Because I think it's different. It's not, while in total dollars...
I think you're right. I know where you're going, so.
Yeah.
But it should be easy math.
Percentage basis.
Let's talk a $100,000 house. A $100,000 exemption means you'd pay zero in CPA, as opposed to 30 bucks, right? Under the 3%.
Just the median, median home price.
But at 0.78% added to $100,000 would be $70, $7.80. So each, any particular parcel, you all save the $100,000 on the exemption, but you do contribute differently on the water infrastructure fund surcharge.
Right, right.
In total, it is equivalent.
That's what I kind of wanted to get that picture graphically laid out.
Yeah, I can do that.
Good idea.
And the same thing for the half a million dollars of free cash.
With the CPC tax that's happening now.
Selectmen Holcomb, are you, the impact of using it for anything as opposed to using it to return to the taxpayers is, what would the impact on the tax rate be?
Right.
Okay.
Anyone else?
No, I'd just like to echo Tracy's comments. Thank you. This was a very informative and long evening. Thank you.
Okay, lastly, upcoming tri-town Board of Select meeting discussion. Is there anything else that we want to address on that?
Yes, firstly, I just, if there's any direction of any matters that you want to make sure are discussed, I can work with CDM and our Connoarts and the other communities to make sure that we have a productive discussion in that regard.
Well, one of the things that I think we should think about, Mr. Chairman, is whether or not there's someone that should at least understand the legal intricacies of the agreement. I mean, I think we're very well-versed on wastewater and the costs and the three towns working together, but I don't know if, I just sort of raised that, maybe that's a question for Dan and Liz and the town administrators, but there may be some value in just having someone there who's versed in the legal construction of the agreement and how that was constructed, how it was set. I know, I know it, I just have this fear that we're going to have a meeting and a discussion about a legal agreement, and you're looking for the lawyer to explain a provision or how it's constructed, and they might not be there to answer that question. That's the only, that's the only concern that I have, is whether or not we'll have all the right people there. I'm sure on the technical side, we'll have plenty of support.
If you mentioned the peer review was going to involve a review of the agreement as well as the costs, is there going to be any kind of legal input in that review?
The discussion that occurred at the subgroup meeting of the three town representatives probably a year and a half ago was that we were working off the MFN template, and that had been reviewed by four law firms, three town councils, and there was another firm that actually drafted a special legislation and did a review of it, that unless there was a significant request or change to that document, that they all felt confident that it had been reviewed. I know some of them have passed along to their own town councils certain questions, and some folks in their reviews have passed along some word edits, but I don't believe any technical issues have been raised to date in reviewing that that have triggered it, but that's the discussion. It wasn't our decision.
I think early on, when we started with the draft, as David mentioned, Copelman and Page is the council for Harwich and Dennis, and Tallaman for us. The, there was interface with the lawyers on the agreement. They got to like what I would call... the lawyers on the agreement, they got to, like, what I would call pretty much a steady state on that, and we've only, since those back and forth, we've only had a couple of minor tweaks, and in all those instances, both Copelman and Talaman have been clued into that conversation. So I'll check in with town council on our end of it, but as far as I know, there hasn't been anything that has appeared since the construction of the document that is anything legally problematic.
I'm only suggesting that we have somebody on hand to answer a legal question about an aspect of the agreement, just anticipation that if a question does come up, we're not sort of bumbling around for an extended period of time, but there's someone there that could quickly answer it, so that this meeting can move along relatively quickly. I think the last meeting went along way too long, as far as I'm concerned, so it's just in the, in the interest of getting through this meeting and through this discussion quickly. But I'm not suggesting we raise something or discuss something, but it wouldn't surprise me, what do we have, what, five selectmen, three towns? Wouldn't surprise me if someone asks a question about why this was constructed this way, or why it was set up this way, well, what if this was changed or that changed? Again, it's just to help the meeting move along and make sure we're prepared, that's all.
All right. I would like to thank Dave, and I would like to thank the members of RAC. Also, a special thanks to Rich Bean Venu for all his hard work and his analysis, and Jeff Colby for his input as well. So thank you very much, this has been very informative, and I think that for people watching, they probably can't catch all of this, because a lot of it's technical, but I think they can get a good overview of what the tri-agreement's all about, what some of the challenges are, and what the benefits are of pursuing a regional agreement rather than a Yarmouth-only agreement. But this will be, you know, a, something I think they can consult to get some background on this. We will be having more informative sessions between now and town meeting, certainly, but we're off to a great start. And this was an idea, Eric couldn't make it tonight, but he says he'll be reviewing the video of what was covered tonight, so this was a benefit for all five of the selectmen in bringing the various pieces and aspects of this discussion together in one meeting. I think it was a great idea, and I thank everybody for their participation.
Will this packet be uploaded to the DHY disinformation? Is this on there already?
Most of it, I think, yes.
I think, I haven't seen the full packet, maybe Rich's financials aren't there, but everything strictly DHY is already uploaded on the dhycleanwaters.org website.
Right, for people at home, dhycleanwaters.org to get all the information.
Okay, thank you for that, Tracy. Do we have a motion adjourned?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, or adjourned.
I've got a number of the calls.